So this graph, if you look, and I'll try to point to both of them, and hopefully you can see this little laser pointer. This green graph is calls for service handled by the Redding Police Department since 2010. So in 2011, this department roughly handled about 83,000 calls for service a year. In 2014, last year, when I say, this is all 2014 information. So when I say this year, I don't mean 2015, we haven't handled 94,000 calls for service in two months. 2014, but if my verbiage gets bad, you'll know what I'm talking about. Last year, we handled 94,022 calls for service. The problem with this is in this timeframe, our staffing level has remained the same. So you have 98 sworn officers, 50 in patrol. We have four assigned to traffic. Right now, we have two assigned to traffic because we had to cut it in half because we've been doing bike patrols at the request of the community to deal with some of our issues with our transient population downtown and on our business districts. And we've had to actually cut it in half even more and send two back to patrol just to fill and keep our vacancies filled from our injuries of our officers. When I talk about 50 officers in patrol, at any one time, it's usually between 10 to 15% of our patrol force that's off on injury, usually knee back and shoulder surgeries. So they're getting hurt at a higher rate because we have less officers on the street to fight with bad guys that are hyped up on methamphetamine is the typical drug that we deal with. But now, I'm afraid that this is even going to go up, and we'll talk about that a little bit more because of things, not just prison realignment, but now Proposition 47. Proposition 47 has turned all drugs to misdemeanor crimes. So if you think about the worst drugs that you can think of, methamphetamine, heroin, bath salts, that are one of the, create one of the most violent offenders, PCP, like the guy we had the other night, that straight possession is now a misdemeanor. So they don't go to jail, we take their drugs, and they get a ticket. You get a traffic ticket now for possession of methamphetamine and heroin with the passage of Proposition 47. So, and we'll talk about how that's going to relate back to some of the other problems that we're seeing when it comes to specifically property crimes and some of our violent crimes. How this equates to is also this line right here. That's our emergency or priority one call response time. So if you look back in 2010, here's the timeline over here. It took us roughly eight and a half, nine minutes to respond to an emergency call. Right now, in the city of Redding, our average emergency response time is almost 16 minutes. These are your injury traffic accidents. These are your shootings. These are your homicides. These are your worst calls that we respond to, and it's taking us 16 minutes to get there. 15 minutes and 58 seconds. To handle this call load, and I've said this before at town hall meetings, the Redding Police Department's minimum shift staffing for 60 square miles and a population of daytime population of roughly over 100,000 people, you're talking about seven officers and a sergeant. So when we have our overlap shifts, you get 14 officers and two sergeants. So it's not a lot of staffing to cover. Every one of our beats is nine and a half square miles. There's one officer in that beat. So to put that in perspective, a good friend of mine is the chief in Gardena. Gardena is 65,000 people, six and a half square miles, and he has 103 sworn. We have 98 sworn to cover 100,000 people in 60 square miles. So the department is doing the best it can with the resources we have. A lot of the special projects that we've done over the last year with the bike patrols and these cleanups that we're doing, we're doing a major cleanup on Sunday in Linden Canyon with the residents of the Indian Hills subdivision. All that stuff either happens on overtime, or we're pulling from this to do this. So when you look at this, if you look at our recent decision, we are no longer responding to non-injury traffic accidents because they're a civil matter between the two parties involved. Basically, we do a report for the insurance companies. And we stopped responding to those because that's almost 2,000 of those calls for service. So we're trying to free up officers' time so they can deal with the more serious calls. So let's go into what our crime rate looked like last year. So this, and I'm sorry that if you hear a little clinking, I've had the flu and I'm still coughing, so I've got a hals in my mouth so I don't cough in this microphone. As I say that, I cough. This red line here is our total Part 1 crimes. So you can see that here in 2010, here's 2011. 2011 came with the advent of AB 109, or prison realignment, where they let everybody out of prison and changed it to where we can't send people to prison. So when you talk about AB 109ers when this started, what people talked about is who got out of prison and came back to our community. And let me make it clear, they came back to our community. So you got returned back to the community that you were sentenced from. Well, if you look at what happened in 2011 to 2012, we had a huge jump in crime. Because what they let out was non-violent, non-serious, non-high-risk sex offenders. So what did they let out? Property criminals. Look at our violent crime rate during that same time. Remained relatively steady. Look at our property crime rate during that time. That year, it went up about 29%. Now, if you look at the next year, coming down to what would be 2012 to 2013, we took about a 12% dip in property crime. This year, we had about a 3% increase. Let me tell you my concern to that. I do a lot of public speaking. I go to every group that invites and wants the chief to talk. I haven't turned down a single one if I'm available since I've been chief a little over three years ago. So I do a lot of public speaking. And constantly, I have people coming up to me saying, "Chief, I've been the victim six times, but I don't call you guys because I don't want to bother you because I know you're busy." I'm afraid that what we have is a huge under-reporting problem right here. This is reported crime. If people don't call us, we don't record it, we don't report it. And I don't know how to gauge unreported crime. There are surveys that are done every year on a national level called the National Crime Victimization Survey, but they don't focus on Redding. And it's very hard to get that statistical data and figure out how many people do we have that are actually victims of crime that don't report it. And I've urged people for three years to please make a report online. Call the police. If you don't want to wait the hours that it takes us to get there, and I realize it does take us hours to get there. The other day, I arrested a guy on Hilltop Drive with Ed and Doug. I had backup. And I called 911 dispatch, and it took about 15 to 20 minutes for an officer to show up to help the chief with somebody in custody. So that should be a good signifier to you of, you know, how short-staffed we are and how we need to improve the staffing level of the Redding Police Department. Violent crime-wise, I don't think we have an under-reporting problem because people report violent crime. But if you can see, now this is a pretty big scale, you know, of a graph to kind of accommodate the higher number and the total number. So if you look at actual violent crime, this is what the breakdown looks like. So over time, our aggravated assaults actually have gone down a little bit, and they took a slight into uptick this year. We have had a lot more over the last few years, about 50 more, 40 to 50 more robberies a year. But we're remaining about 20 to 25% of those robberies are shoplift related. They're not what you would consider a traditional robbery. Meaning that somebody goes in to steal a shirt, loss prevention grabs them, they now use force or fear to get away, and it turns a shoplifting into a robbery. That is not to say that we don't have our traditional robberies. Purse snatches, wallet snatches, you know, we had a bank robbery of the other day, or traditional convenience store robberies. But we're not seeing as much as some other communities are still, and we're very lucky for that. Some of this is actually where people call and say, "Hey, this guy beat me up and took my dope." And they actually do report that to us. And considering that that illegal narcotic is actually the property of the person that was there, by law, we have to take a robbery report. So some of these, and then we take a lot of them, like the guy that, I stopped the guy for the other day on Hilltop Drive, where it's kind of that transient, on transient crime. They beat the living tar out of this kid and took his skateboard, yet he refused to cooperate with the investigation. But we still have, end up with that statistic. The rape statistic has remained, gone down a little bit, but it's remained pretty steady. If you look at rape statistics for per capita, Redding is actually fairly high compared to other communities. And that's a plus and a minus, I guess you would say. It's a minus because the rapes are happening. It's a plus because we actually get them reported and we can follow up on it. We have an excellent relationship with the Women's Refuge and One Safe Place, and that is where most of our reports come through. They encourage them to go to the police, report the crime despite, you know, the humiliation and other things that come with these crimes, so that we can actually investigate and hold people accountable for those crimes. So that's, like I said, it's a plus or a minus. The minuses that are happening, the plus is the fact that we have a good relationship with the refuge and the One Safe Place that we actually get to report these crimes. Our homicides have stayed relatively steady. All but one of these that have taken place in the three years that I've been the chief have been family members or known associates. We're not getting random homicides like you would see where I came from in Stockton, where there's a lot of gang violence and people are getting gunned down in the street. These are usually, we've had one that was a dope-related homicide last year, but the rest of them are all family member-related crimes. When you talk about our largest portion, if you look at this aggravated assault portion, the largest, about 25% of that is still domestic violence. Domestic violence is very difficult for us to prevent. Domestic violence takes place in the home where there's constitutional protections to keep me out. So we work once again very closely with One Safe Place and victims advocacy groups to deal with domestic violence. One of the biggest problems with domestic violence is really that the victims of that, usually the women, don't feel like they have somewhere to turn and get away. And we need to break that, empower them so they know that they can break that cycle of violence. So that if you have 118 domestic violence, you don't have one victim that's been violated five times because she's afraid to leave because he may be the financial support. We have to have those systems in place, and through One Safe Place and the Women's Refuge, I think we're making progress in letting those victims know that there is an alternative to staying in that relationship. This, other aggravated assaults are typically bar fights. We are seeing a lot of increase in the transient, on transient crime, where they're just beating the tar out of each other. I just got a report on the Redding Merchants Crime Watch from Doug, and I'm going to screw up his last name, Jenky, that, you know, he had to stay at his business because they broke his front window, and there were two transients in the street beating the tar out of each other right in front of his business on Hilltop Drive. So this transient, on transient crime is starting to make up a large portion of that. It's not quite to the point where our domestic violence is because we ran that, but it's getting pretty close. So when we move on to property crime, this is what's affecting our average citizen. This is the biggest concern, other than transientism, that I hear about when I go out and talk to people on a daily basis. And we kind of did a teeter totter last year. So last year, motor vehicle theft was up and burglary was way down. And now burglary is up, motor vehicle theft is down, which leaves us about 3% up. But if you look, our general larcenies went up substantially. But even if you look at from where we were in 2010 on burglaries, we were sitting at almost 1,100 burglaries that year, and this year, we ended at about 802. So this is when I came in as chief. This is when I came in as chief, which is very comforting when you're an Atwell employee and crime goes up that high. Come on, that was a little funny. One of the things that we really started talking to this community about is crime prevention. And we've done, you know, crime prevention through environmental design and trying to educate the public that I would love for Redding to be where it was in the 60s, where you could leave stuff in your car and you could leave your doors unlocked. And folks, I'm sorry, but the reality is, it's just not there anymore. Redding is not a small town anymore. Redding is a mid-sized city with mid-sized city issues. And you have to protect your property and yourselves the way that you have to in those communities. And so if you look at, when I came in here, 50, just over 50% of the burglaries that we had in the city of Redding had no forced entry. Meaning we were leaving our doors, windows, and other things open, making it easy for them to steal from us. In two years, we've gone to only 32% of ours are no forced entry. Now, has our burglary rate gone down? Yeah, from 2012. Did it go down from last year? No, it didn't. But this is really, when you look at that robbery statistic, or that burglary and that property crime statistic, this is really the only bright point I could find. So we're actually making improvements and making it harder for them to steal from us. And now, this didn't exist two years ago. Now we actually have 8%, where we have to count them as a burglary by the Bureau of Crime Statistics reporting, but they didn't actually make entry. That 8% didn't exist two years ago. So there are some good news stories in this as well, that we're starting to protect our homes and we're starting to pay attention. The biggest problem is this larceny statistic here at 2,600. That is our largest portion, that is our general theft. Shoplifting, theft from your car. And I want to show you something that I haven't been able to get people to pay attention to. Is this right here. Almost half of the thefts that take place in the city of Redding take place from a motor vehicle. Now, I've read the bloggers and I've heard people's criticism that the chief says, "It's our fault that we're leaving something in our car." That's not what I'm saying. You should be able to. The reality is that you can't. So crime prevention is not contributing to your own victimization. Not making it easy for them to take from you. And if you leave property in your car and valuables in your car, there is an element in this community that will steal it from you. And the more that we can bring that down, the more that we can help our own crime rate. This is how many arrests we made last year. And this is actually up about 300. So let me explain to you what I think is going to happen next year. I think this misdemeanor arrest rate is going to go up, and I think this felony arrest rate is going to go down. And the reason I think that's going to happen is Proposition 47. Because so many crimes, when California passed that law, and it was voter-passed, and I will say it was not Shasta County voter-passed, but your friends in LA and San Francisco thought this was a good idea. And this bill was passed by calling Californians for safer schools. "Let's take money from criminal justice and give it to schools and make them safer." My point to that is, great, you made the school safe, but the kid's not safe to walk to it. So a little bit of what I talked about earlier, Prop 47, most of your burglaries now, your commercial burglaries and your thefts, now have a dollar value attached at $950. Theft of a gun used to be an automatic felony. Now that gun's got to be over $950, or it's a misdemeanor. There is a concept in law called the stale misdemeanor rule. Meaning that law enforcement officers can only arrest for a misdemeanor when that crime is committed in our presence. So if they walk in the front door of your business, pick up your $750 iPad and run off down the street, and you have them on video, and I can positively identify that guy, and I catch him an hour and a half later, and he no longer has the iPod, but I know he committed that crime, he is not arrestable. Because that misdemeanor did not take place in my presence. So we have to refer that report to the district attorney for a complaint. In our current system, do you think they're going to show up to court? What is the primary cause, in my opinion, of all this property crime? Addiction. But we just made most of, or all of, our drug possession crimes misdemeanors. So when we catch somebody with that methamphetamine, that heroin, those bath salts, all those really toxic nasty drugs, we take their drugs and they get a traffic ticket. They don't go to jail. So I'm really concerned that that, you've also taken those drug offenses, and since you diminished them from a misdemeanor to a felony, you limit a judge's authority to sentence them to rehabilitation. Court-ordered rehabilitation. So a lot of them that are not on court, now misdemeanors, because it's retroactive, a lot of them have walked out of their court-ordered rehabilitation. So what benefit are we giving to those that are addicted when they get caught if we can't order them to take rehabilitation? You're just going to wait for them to hit rock bottom. And for different people, that's a different bottom. So I'm really concerned that that's going to have a very negative effect on this property crime rate. Now, it won't change our numbers, because that's California definition and California punishment. And these definitions, we actually follow the Federal Bureau of Investigations reporting guidelines. So I'm really afraid that Proposition 47, because you're going to decrease the punishment for most of our property crime, you're going to decrease the punishment or the ability to order people to rehab for the drug crimes that lead to the addiction that leads to the property crime, that this may go up significantly. It was just bad law. And I don't think people really understood what they were voting for when they voted for Proposition 47. Unfortunately, when it comes to AB 109, that three-judge panel knew exactly what they were doing when they ordered AB 109. But, you know, that's here nor there. I think that AB 109 has kind of where we are, and it's what we're going to get stuck with. I don't see it's going to change. California's not building prison capacity. And the sheriffs are stuck with what used to be the prison inmates. So that results in our jail being full. And we go back to this merry-go-round idea where we arrest them, we take them to jail, they're full, they get out, we arrest them again, and on and on and on we go. When you talk about arrest statistics, where we make 7,000 arrests a year, that's roughly 20 people a day. 20 people a day that we're arresting or giving a citation to, with 94,000 calls for services, roughly 260 calls a day that 21 officers roughly respond to. And we're still arresting people on about 10% of those a day. So the Redding Police Department, I will tell you that the quality of officers that we have in our department is outstanding. There's just not enough of them. And the only reason that we've been able to tread water the way that we have is because we have quality people in our department. We get to hire the best, and I'm very proud of them. You know, when I was in Stockton, and I put this information out a couple of years ago when I did the first town hall meeting to show the public the quality of their police department. When I was in Stockton, I think about 5% of our department had a bachelor's degree. The Redding Police Department is almost 60%. Redding, Stockton Police Department, only the command staff had master's degrees. In our department, it's almost 20%. We get very good people. And since I've been chief of police, I think we just hired the 27th person in three years since I've been chief, roughly 25% of our department. Myself included, I think four of them weren't born and raised in Shasta County. So what we end up getting is we end up getting good officers that either went in the military, started their career someone else, and came home. You do get some migrants like me that just love it here. But majority of our officers, you know, where I came from, in a big city like that, only about 20% of our department even lived in the city. Most of my department lives in the city or the immediate surrounding country area. They have a stake in this community because this is where they grow up. And they really care about Redding and its health and its safety. And they put in a lot of time and they put themselves at great risk. So you're very lucky you have the department that you do and the employees that you do. Because Chief Palladie is always the one on TV, and Chief Palladie is always the one on the radio, and Chief Palladie is the one that gets to stand up here and do all this. But it's those guys and gals that make the real difference for you. And you can see him standing around, and there's probably some others in the audience that are out of their uniforms, but when you see him, no. I get three complaints about my officers all the time. They're cold, they're in a hurry, and they're flippant. They're cold because cops get that way because we see things people aren't supposed to see. Cops get exposed to some very traumatic incidents, and they get a little cold as a protection measure. They're in a hurry because there's 25 other people waiting for them to get there. And they're flippant because they're frustrated. They're frustrated at how many calls that they have holding. You know, I walked in the police department the other day, and one of my officers said, "Hey, chief, I've been 10 calls today, every one of them to deal with transients that I've arrested before." So they get frustrated. And unfortunately, sometimes that comes out too. Our good citizens, not just those that have earned that frustration. And for that, if you get that, I apologize. Give me a call, we'll address it. But you got good people that care about this community, and they're all family people. And they're doing a really yeoman's work trying to keep up with this crime problem and this level of calls for service increase with the staffing level that the Redding Police Department is under right now. So... The biggest issue that I hear about as I go around and I talk to people is transients. So what have we done about that? Well, we've done a couple of things the last year. We tried to take a softer approach. So we partnered with the Good News Rescue Mission, whose executive director, Jonathan Anderson, is here tonight. We partnered with Mental Health. We partnered with the Department of Social Services. And we actually sent an officer. What we found when Mike Johnson and I got the group together is that there were actually mental health workers with the Department of Social Services who are paid to go out and do outreach to the homeless, but they were afraid to go into the homeless camps, to go out and do their jobs. So what we did is, two days a week, we partnered them up with Officer Teddy Snyder. He's another Stockton import, but he didn't grow up here, but he loves to fly fish, so he followed me on up here. We sent him out with Teddy, and that way they felt safe to go out and do their job. We had the ability to give them immediate shelter with the Good News Rescue Mission. We could link them up with the mental health assets that they may need because a lot of that transient population does have mental health issues. Whether it's because they're self-medicating with drugs or because they destroyed their brains with the drugs, either way, they've got mental health issues. And we tried to give them that help. And then we also tried to connect them with services through the Department of Social Services so that they could find the services they need to get help so they could solve the condition of homelessness. That was the intent. And we also did a survey during that timeframe, which we talked about two town hall meetings ago, and we also talked about, and we released the stats that we found to the media. When we finished that process, then we started our enforcement aspect. We've done a major cleanup behind the Masonic. There is one planned on Sunday in Linden Canyon, Mercy Canyon, below Mercy Hospital in Indian Hills subdivision that will take place on Sunday. That's a partnership between the residents of Indian Hills subdivision and the police department. All the people that are doing the cleanup there will be citizen volunteers. We have a work crew coming from the Sheriff's Department, and we have our wonderful Bob Brandon that will be there helping them do that cleanup on Sunday. And then, we did the bike patrol. And the bike patrol has issued roughly about 800 citations for transient activity in your parks. Urinating in public, drinking in public, you know, all the things that come with it. But Redding Municipal Code violations that we cite them for are misdemeanors. But if they don't show up to court, we don't get a warrant for them through the DA. So what's the effectiveness of that enforcement, other than they really don't like talking to the cops? We run them for warrants, we kick them out of the park, we make them pour out their alcohol, we do all that kind of stuff. So we have made some efforts, but one of the things that the Homeless Outreach Program, when we put it together, Mike Johnson and I wanted answers to two questions. Why did you come to Redding? Or Anderson, because they did it in Anderson too. And what brought you here? Because if we don't know why they're coming here, and we don't know if they're local or not, then how do we develop solutions for those problems? So the bike officers have actually been doing that. Officer Gary Meadows is sitting over here. He was one of the bike officers that gathered all those statistics. So after I'm done, if you have actual questions for him that you'd like for him to answer, he can come up to the mic and answer those because he's actually the one out doing the enforcement and gathering the statistics. We've also, in a partnership with Code Enforcement, which Deborah Wright and Gary are back, right back here, raise your hands. They're both from Code Enforcement. And Mike Thomas over there. Mike Thomas is a retired sergeant with the Redding Police Department. He is working part-time now, working with Gary to go out and deal with just transient issues, downtown hotels and squatters and houses. So they have already got one major cleanup done below View 202, up off of Hempstead. That was done by a private contractor because they were able to contact the owners and get that done. They've been doing a lot of work up and down the river trail, posting camps. They're working with us on the Linden Canyon. And if you'd like to hear what, the actual pictures I'm going to show you tonight were taken by these gentlemen in January. So what I'm going to show you tonight is the answers to those questions that we didn't get answered in the first survey. So where do they come from to get to the city of Redding? This is self-reported data from the transients on where they came from directly to the city of Redding. And there's various reasons that make this happen, and we're going to cover those later. But if you look, not every one of those dots is one person. We put one dot per location. So realistically, we've ended up getting quite a bit from other parts of California, but we haven't got 25 people from Florida. So it's one dot per location that they reported that they came from. But that's still a lot of influx into the city of Redding. And we're also seeing that it's rather seasonal. So you have a group of people that come into the city of Redding during the marijuana growth season that are called Tremors. They're not homeless. But they live like they are for the months of the growth season, and they actually go tap off the resources intended for the homeless. And that's not what our community is donating to homeless charitable organizations to try to support those people. When they come here, they grow their marijuana, they take their $50,000, $60,000 worth of dope, and they go home. And that's that very young, able-bodied crew that comes in about the beginning of the planting season and disappears right after the harvest is done and the winter starts. What does this lead to for the city of Redding? These are known transient camps reported to the Redding Police Department in the city of Redding. We have a volunteer now that answers all of your reports on transient camps that come in off of our website. And these are known locations to Bob Brandon and places that he deals with. I want you to focus on the fact that if you look at our rivers and our creeks, there's a lot of central, centered around those natural resources. This is the number one complaint that comes into the Redding Police Department is these transient issues. And we have to be able to find solutions to this problem. And remember, when we talk about this, we're talking about the transient population. We have talked for a couple of years now, as we've been talking about this, that there are actually three populations out there. We have called them homeless, transient, and panhandler. We've called them will, won't, and can't. This is that won't population. This is the population that deals with the police on a regular basis and quite frankly, are taking a lot of the resources that should be going to you good people and is being dedicated to them because they cannot behave themselves. So now what I'm going to show you is a little bit of the environmental damage that's being done to your community. This is Linden Canyon, Indian Hills subdivision, Mercy Hospital. Look at the proximity of these residential neighborhoods to where these transients are living down here in Linden Canyon. This community, it's taken us, if you go, if, I'll go back real quick. This canyon has 29 different property owners. It took me and Deborah Wright, working with Joni Morrison and Nick Bundy, over a year of sending letters to get the cons... of sending letters to get the consent to enforce so that we can help this community go clean up this canyon. I sent them three letters from the chief of police, most of which go ignored. Some of these properties are owned by estates, and the people that own it don't even know. And it's very hard to get those consent to enforce so we can go do our job. So you can see the transient camps here, here. See the transient camps here and here, right in proximity of these neighborhoods with children. This community's dealt with shots fired, yelling and screaming in the canyon, fires during the fire season. So this is a huge problem for these residential neighborhoods. It's not just our business community that is dealing with this problem. It's our neighborhoods as well. Look at the amount of trash. What do you think happens when it rains and the water starts flowing? Where does that trash go? That trash goes to the lowest point. Bob Brandon, last year, out of public open space alone, because there's so much of a problem of this, and we don't have consent to enforce for every piece of private property, Bob Brandon removed 148,000 pounds of trash from transient camps last year. Seventy-four tons of trash. One guy and his crew. I could use two of them. I could use three of them. If you give me Bob Brandon, I can get a lot done. You give me three more Bobs, and we can do some stuff. Bob's the hardest-working guy in the police department. And you know, when Bob Brandon goes out to these transient camps, the transients actually really like Bob because he's fair. He gives them the opportunity to get their stuff and leave. But remember the requirements that we have for this now. So bad practice makes bad law. An attorney told me that. So the city of Fresno, a long time ago, lost a $1.6 million lawsuit to a transient group because they weren't doing it very well. Sacramento lost another $800,000 lawsuit. So let me tell you what we have to do now. We cannot just go clean up their stuff. This is why we encourage private property owners to go clean up your properties, because you don't have to go through the requirements we do because you own the property. They're squatting on your property. Whereas if the police department does it, I have to tag the property. I have to wait seven to 10 days, giving them opportunity to move their valuables. And then when we go to clean it up, I have to store anything of value for 90 days. So what's value? That's a good question. Is a tent that's soiled with feces and urine valuable? Is a tent that's filled with needles valuable? So Bob has to use his good discretion to try to decide what is biohazard and what is valuable, and we actually do bag and store their property, of which nobody ever comes to claim. Most of the time, once we've tagged it, whatever they wanted, they took, and the rest of it is just trash. So what I'm going to show you really is more of what this really looks like when you get down into the transient camps. It's filthy. There's garbage everywhere. When Nick Bundy did the cleanup of one half, one portion of Indian Hill subdivision or in that Linden Canyon, he removed 2,200 pounds of bicycles. We have charities that give them bicycles, but they leave them in the canyon. There were piles of clean clothes that were unused. Chris Swaga, who has a horse ranch down off of, in South Redding, that actually started a fire that burned part of her property from a transient camp, says there's miles and miles of toothbrushes down there because we give them toothbrushes, they use them, and they throw them away, and they just, they don't care. So this amount of garbage that they're creating, this is a lot of environmental damage being done to your community and your natural resources because they can't clean up after themselves. This is all in Linden Canyon. This is what we're going to deal with on Sunday. Gary took these pictures in January. This is your parks. And if you can't see that, this is the softball stands at South City Park. And that guy's sleeping right there. These are supposed to be intended for your kids to go play. But nobody will go there now because they've been taken over. This is what our park staff deal with on a daily basis when they go to clean the bathrooms. People sleeping in them, people occupying the space, and normal people can't go there. This is what happens when it rains and all the river, all the garbage flows into the river. So we have a fly shop here in town that actually brings a lot of tourists to the city of Redding, a lot of dollars to the city of Redding. But during the fishing season, I get at least an email or two a week from fishermen from out of town that say, "Hey, great fishing, beautiful place, not coming back unless you clean those transients off that river." That's damaging our businesses and the economic stability of our community when we have that happening. Our fishermen that walk the banks have to deal with this under our bridges. It makes them feel unsafe. And quality of life and what we deal with in law enforcement really is actual crime and the fear of crime. This contributes to people's fear of crime, and it damages their quality of life. And that's the problem. If the transients didn't ever committed a single crime, which since a lot of this population is very addicted, they're also responsible for a lot of our property crime. Even if they didn't, though, it still makes people feel unsafe, and we have to find a way to address this. So why are they coming to Redding? This was the, well, this is actually the Lorenz Hotel, so I'm two slides away. Every morning, they just did a major renovation here. Sam Allen took these pictures. Every day, they have to chase the transients out of the alcove right next to their businesses, and this is what they leave behind. And if you don't get the picture, that's feces on the wall. This is what these businesses have to deal with every single day they come to work. So this, once again, this is that transient population that doesn't want to go to the Good News Rescue Mission so they have a place to stay. This is that drug-addicted, life-choice group that we have to deal with, and we have to find a way to deal with it. And this is why they come to Redding. This is reported. We interviewed 188 transients. 61 refused to answer our questions, probably because they're here for illegal activity. 29 percent say they were traveling through and got stuck. Well, we have a freeway that goes through the middle of our city, and we have a Greyhound bus station here. So we've started a bus ticket program that was part of the Safe City Project. The Good News Rescue Mission has taken on that project. Here's the problem we see, and Jonathan and I have already talked about this, so I'm not shocking Jonathan in any way, shape, or form. Most of those people say they got here, they want to go home, but I don't have family at the other end. So maybe we need to relook that requirement. If I'm a free will person, and I don't want to be in Redding, and I got stranded here because I ran out of money, or I came here with my boyfriend to get a 215 card, and now I'm stranded, and I want to go back to one of those states that they came from, why should we make any other requirements? Why don't we acknowledge their free will and let them go home? Why would we trap them here? Thirty-four percent of the people came because they have friends or family. Unfortunately, most of them tell us that because of their drug addiction and their criminal behavior and their misbehavior, their families have turned them out again, and they don't want to be here. So once again, if they don't have family at the other end, and they're stranded here because the family or friend that they came to be here with doesn't let them stay with them anymore, and they want to go home, why wouldn't we accommodate that? If you look at combining those two statistics, that's roughly, and I'm going to use round numbers, about 60 percent. If 50 percent of those people say, "I want to go home," when they got a bus ticket from us, then 30 percent of our transient population just went back where they came from. The other portion of this say that they come here for free access to charitable services. I can't change that, folks. I don't have the authority as a chief of police to go tell charities how to do their business. What I'm telling you is that your voice does. This community needs to decide how it wants to be known. This community needs to decide what its attractors are, and this community needs to tell its charitable services how they're going to do business so that they don't attract them. I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't have a heart and doesn't want to help our local homeless population not be in that condition. But we cannot enable that condition either. And we can't make it easy and comfortable for them so that they don't have to go to the Good News Rescue Mission and get help. Your voice has to do that because they don't have to listen to me. I don't run those charities. I keep hearing about this silent majority. It's time for you to speak up because that's what's going to change that bottom portion because I can't do it for you. So one of the things, I did have a meeting with the Good News Rescue Mission board the other day, and I talked with them about this because, quite frankly, there are a lot of them that tell us that's why they come here. So we had a very frank, very good discussion that night. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to shut up for a minute, which any of you that know me know that that's not easy for me because I never shut up. And I'm going to let Jonathan Anderson, the executive director of the Good News Rescue Mission, come up because they're looking at revamping some of the ways that they do things, and that's a positive change. So I'm going to let Jonathan kind of describe that to you.
I'll just turn it around. Thank you. Thank you, chief, for giving us this opportunity, allowing us to be here. The mission has been in this community for 50 years now. As you sit out here, I am almost positive every single person has heard something about the mission. It could be good, it could be bad. It can be rumor, it could be myth, it could be truth, it could be constructive criticism. But I'm almost positive everybody has heard something about the mission. We at the mission have taken a very candid look at what we do. We've had, over this past year, some candid conversations with Chief Paletti. We've created partnerships with all of our local law enforcement. We've created partnerships with our community colleges. We've listened to all of the criticism that's been coming to us in this past year. We have taken it to heart, we've swallowed our pride in some areas, and we've begun to make some very necessary changes at the mission. Here's what's important to note. Every homeless person who comes to us has a poverty mentality, and it's wrapped up in saying, "I'm homeless, therefore you have to give to me." It's entitlement. At the mission, we want to radically shatter that mentality and replace it with the mentality of, "I'm only homeless for a season because I have every resource in this community to get better. So while this community provides to help me break my cycle of poverty, what can I give back? How am I going to give back to my community?" So this mentality at the mission, we are offering people the opportunity to dismantle the poverty mentality and get into a mentality of giving back. That giving back can look like homeless people who are volunteering to clean up the River Trail, to clean up South City Park, to help clean up some of our local businesses. Is that going to happen? Well, it's already been happening, and I'll tell you that in a second. We're not changing, but we are emphasizing on our theological message because we're faith-based, one very simple command that Jesus said, "Go love your neighbor." So how are you going to go into your community and love your local businesses? How are you going to go in and show love to people while you break your cycle of poverty and give back to your community because your community's helping you break that cycle? So with this, we have taken a look at what we do. We have now opened our campus to an all-day schedule so people don't have to go and be idle at South City Park. They can be active on our campus in efforts to break their cycle of poverty. So we're helping them not have to be idle on the streets. There's so many initiatives we're taking, but I don't have time to talk on those. So what I will say is as we move forward with this, partnering with Redding Police Department, Officer Gary Meadows has been very instrumental with us as well. Officer Moore, we had a great conversation. We have implemented a software database to track every single person who gets services from us. We track everything about them. We're going to hold you accountable to loving your neighbor. So we do not tolerate panhandling. We do not tolerate stealing shopping carts. We do not tolerate loitering in front of businesses, and our staff now canvassed this area. And if we see you breaking those policy and procedures, you get an alert on your account, and it goes straight to my cell phone the moment that you come onto our property, and we get to say, "Hey, on this day, this time, this is what you did, and before you receive our services, we need to have a talk about your negative behaviors in our community because we're not going to put up with it." So this effort, doing this, and it's a collective impact. We have hundreds and hundreds of people who are coming to help us with this. In 2014, we put together services that are helping people break their cycle of poverty. We built an adult basic education center, a job readiness center, a college readiness center, which we partner with the college and sheriffs and probation on. We have built a financial literacy course. We have built things to help people break this cycle of poverty. We've opened our campus to a day-long schedule. We even started and built our own mental health facility to help people get through mental health. With these efforts, in 2014, with candid conversations with the chief and with others, we were able to help 131 homeless people get off the streets in Shasta County and into permanent sustainable housing. We were also able to see 50 people who are currently at Shasta College, Simpson University, and Chico State, all with an average GPA around 3.5. We were also able to help 50 people enroll into our drug and alcohol recovery program, and we have 17 people who, to date, have now taken advantage of our Journey Home Project, which was offered through or sponsored by the Safe City Project. If you did the math, in 2014, that's 250 people who wanted to break their cycle of poverty, and in 2014, in one year, 250 people are no longer on the streets of Shasta County. They are in permanent sustainable housing and breaking their cycle of poverty. That's what our community is doing to help those efforts, and it's only because of candid conversations like we have, listening to constructive criticism, and making the necessary changes we need to. So thank you, city of Redding. Support what's happening, and let's continue to go forward. And thank you, chief.
So like I told you guys, that'd be about 45 minutes, which is really short for me. And I'm not talking about my height. So what I want to, obviously, you know, I do question and answer at these things. We have two microphones up here. If you'd like to come ask a question, we don't want to keep you here too late tonight. But if you have a question, please do me a favor. If you have a story that you need to tell me, I'm more than willing to listen when this is over. If you have a crime problem that you need to report to us so we can have somebody get back to you, I have Lieutenant Kobe Heston sitting over here, Captain Roger Moore sitting over there. Please get with them. They will take down the information. We don't want everybody to have to listen to every issue. If you have a question relative to the presentation, you're more than welcome to come up to a microphone and ask the question. I would be more than happy to answer it for you. I can't hear you. Oh, tell you what, I'll come to you. Can I do that? That's not going to screw up the microphone, is it? Okay.
Yeah, in Bangladesh, when they had that shirt factory that collapsed, it had thousands of people working, the average wage was 23 cents an hour. Now, we got two ships coming into this country, the Marco Polo and the Marco Polo II. Each ship has 18,000 containers. The government has to put a tariff on that stuff, or you're never going to get a job. At 20, the average wage for the union is $26.50. That was like five years ago. And it was $10 went to benefits. Over in Bangladesh, there's no benefits, and there's no way of competing with that stuff. And you go to Sears and look at all the stuff, or many of those others. They're all made in India, China, with slave labor.
Sir, is there a question in here somewhere?
Yeah. How are we going to compete with them? We're going to put a tariff on that stuff.
Well, you know, sir, I'm not going to say that I agree with you or don't agree with you. I don't discuss politics in uniform. But I will tell you, it's far beyond my scope as a Redding police chief to affect that. However, if you'd all like me to run for president, we'll talk about that later. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
It seems like, as you stated earlier, that we're legislating more problems, and a lot of those votes are not necessarily from this area, they're from other areas. So it'd be nice to know if you support the Jefferson State movement. And then the second question is...
Once again, I don't discuss politics in uniform. I don't give my...
Very good. All right, we'll move on to the next question then. So how do we work? Because I hear a lot of good, positive things that we are trying to do. What more can we do? And at the same token, I think, once again, we're in a failing system. How do we get more jobs in here so to elevate some of the income and try and get rid of some of the depressed issues that we have?
One of the big, one of the big things, if you look at the goals of public safety, both police and fire, public safety creates a sense of safety in a community that raises a quality of life. When you can raise that quality of life, then business wants to come to your community. That raises the economics of the community, which continues to increase that quality of life, and public safety plays a role in that all the way along. When you look at the city of Redding and you look at where we're going, and communities come, or businesses come to look, and you look at a police department of our staffing level, if you look at nationwide, what you have is desired staffing level for a police department is anywhere from 1.4 to 1.6 officers per thousand. If you look at the Redding Police Department, we have one officer per thousand. And that's our bedtime community, not our daytime community that grossly swells. And it swells because Redding is an island in the middle of a rural area, and Redding is not just a county seat, but Redding is a county seat in a bunch of rural counties that don't have any services whatsoever. So our daytime population swells significantly. Traffic studies are showing between 120,000, 130,000 people. You have to have a police base to create the public safety, to attract... You have to have a police base to create the public safety, to attract the businesses and attract that economics. And right now, you know, I was actually on the radio the other day, and I got asked what the staffing level of this police department wants, and I answered it like this. It depends on what level of service this community expects from its police department. Yeah, you know, if you want us to just respond to emergency calls, and you want us to just tread water like we have, and just be reactive in our enforcement, then 98 works. If you want us to go back to being very responsive, have good customer service, and be able to have a proactive portion to law enforcement, so you have reactive answering 911s, and proactive out looking for bad guys, right now, we don't go look for bad guys, we just drive from call to call to call. So it all depends on what level of service the community wants from its police department. And that level of service is dependent upon that staffing level and that staffing model that we put together. So as we go into the blueprint for, the strategic plan or blueprint for public safety, one of the sections that I'm insistent that be in there, and that my council liaison Brent Weaver and I have talked very extensively about, is we wanna, I wanna make sure that there's a staffing model in there that shows what this department should look like. And then we can decide, you know, if I have this much money, I would staff the department this way. If I have this much, here's what you get. If I have this much, here's what you get. And if I have this much, here's what you get, all the way through unrestricted Rob's Perfect World. Which is probably never gonna happen, but at least then, the council can look at that staffing level and say, "Okay, we need to do, here's how much money we can give, and here's what we're gonna get for it." And I owe that to the council as part of that strategic plan. We're also gonna work our way through our mission and vision statement. Right now, the mission and vision statement that we have for the Redding Police Department was done by Leonard Modi. I love Leonard Modi, but I want it to be my mission and vision statement, because I'm the chief now. We're gonna go all the way through succession planning with that blueprint for public safety, because if you look at a leadership pyramid of most organizations, they look like this. If you look at the leadership pyramid of the Redding Police Department, it looks like this. So you have all the officers, leading to four lieutenants, two captains, and the chief. And I'll tell you that all of those lieutenants, and those two captains, and myself are all the same age or older. So that's an exodus of the leadership of the department relatively quickly. We do have some that will probably retire in two years, I've got about eight years left, so, you know, we'll get a couple of those. But how do I get, as a responsible chief, to get that next chief of police of the Redding Police Department that's probably an officer now, through that rank structure, and get the experience to be prepared to take my place? So, the biggest legacy of every leader is that the department is prepared to go on when he leaves. And I really only have two goals as the chief of police. I wanna leave it better than I found it, and when I walk away, I don't want anyone to notice. So we'll take it all the way through that succession plan, so we're prepared for that. Yes, sir?
You said Prop 47, we'll tie our hands as far as prosecution for felonies on different drugs.
They're not felonies anymore, they're misdemeanors.
Yeah, from Prop 47. What about federal statutes? Can't the federal prosecutor pick that up with federal laws and prosecute?
The federal government won't only pick them up if they cross state lines. They're very restrictive on what they will pick up, and they decide what they pick up. And the Attorney General has been more and more and more restrictive as we've gone along on what the feds will even get involved in. So I don't have a lot of hope for that.
I know the Mexican cartel is now gearing up for brown tar heroin.
Brown tar heroin is here, sir. And the status part about brown tar heroin as opposed to methamphetamine, because a methamphetamine addict needs drugs about every 12 hours. A heroin addict needs it every four to six hours. So how much more do you think they're gonna steal? And the problem with heroin, too, is they get much sicker. So I asked a doctor, you know, because I'm not a doctor, what's it feel like to go through? How would you describe heroin withdrawals? And he said, "Drown yourself in a tub of water and stab yourself in the stomach with knives." That's what the pain they feel. And they're actually anticipating that. When we arrest a person that's addicted on heroin, they're in an absolute panic when we take them to the jail. Because even if the jail's full, but they gotta sit in booking for two, three hours before they walk out the next door, they know they're gonna get sick. And we just took their fix. So now they gotta know they gotta get out while they're sick, get money, and get to their supplier to get their dope. Heroin is here. Heroin started coming here with the cutbacks of opiate painkillers. Doctors were handing them out way too prevalently. You have a lot of people that were taking those painkillers that are now addicted, and quite frankly, the heroin's cheaper than the pills now. And that contributed a lot to that problem. The other contribution to that problem is there's no longer a statewide agency in California that deals with the importation and distribution of drugs in the state of California. They wait for these local agencies to do it. So what happened, there used to be a Bureau of Narcotics Enforcement as part of the Department of Justice. Their union bagged Meg Whitman for governor. Who won? Guess what happened to B and E? Bye-bye. So the state of California is now actually starting to put together some task forces, because I think they realize that mistake, and they're starting to put together some task forces to deal with drugs and violent crime. And they're doing it actually through the California Highway Patrol. Quite frankly, I don't care if it's California Highway Patrol, I don't care if it's Department of Justice, I don't care who the heck it is, but by the time it gets to us, we're a little too short. Shasta Interagency Narcotics Task Force used to be about 12 investigators. Right now, it's four of us, to deal with all the drugs in Shasta County. We're a little behind the power curve. We have two Redding Police Officers, one Sheriff's Deputy, and one from the Department of Homeland Security. Hopefully, one real soon, now that Mike Johnson's getting his guys trained, we'll get Anderson back into that fold. Yes, Charles?
Yes. At a recent Community Corrections Partnership Meeting, you talked about a list of the worst offenders amongst the enabling organizations. Do you have that list ready? And if so, when can we expect to see it?
The only, there were two primary charities that were listed on that list that told us why people came to Redding. It was the Good News Rescue Mission and the Hope Band. The Good News Rescue Mission and the Hope Band. The Hope Band.
Chief, we've been hearing a lot lately, reading in the paper, about sex trafficking. Can you talk about the precedent of that crime in Redding?
We have had one case. Actually, this gentleman right here was the one that broke that case, Jason Schroeder. And we were able to get a prosecution on that case, and they've gone away for quite a while. We're not seeing a lot of it here, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, because quite frankly, our proactive enforcement that would discover that really isn't there. We do have a freeway that goes through the City of Redding, I-5, and that brings me some concern, obviously, that movement of traffic subjects would come through our city. We watch it as much as we can, we communicate very readily with the California Highway Patrol who's here tonight, and the Sheriff's Department and other agencies up and down I-5, to make sure that we're well-coordinated if we see that. I have some concerns, a little bit about these downtown hotels, because they are, quite frankly, I joked at one town hall meeting that they're full of drug thugs and prostitutes. And they really are. Unfortunately, you also have some of our poorest in our community that live in those hotels as well, and they're getting indoctrinated into that system. So, we're actually gonna take some action here to deal with where those houses of ill repute would be, which is those downtown hotels, and we're working with code enforcement, and we're gonna take some, we've taken aggressive action about a year ago on one of them, and it's now half-closed. Code enforcement shut that down with the help of the District Attorney's Office and a baitment order, and we're gonna go after a couple of others of the worst offenders as well. Well, right now, the Americana is horrible, the Market Street Manor, the Redding Inn, drive around downtown. Yes, ma'am? Sorry, sir, I think you were first, but I'll get to you. Ladies first. We'll be gentlemen here. Go right, no, go right ahead.
You mentioned that a council is responsible for deciding how many officers you have available in the community, right? So how are the numbers impacted by the average citizen? Like, what can we do when we see things or things are going on because your numbers are low? What changes or what can change your numbers in the sake of when citizens see crime, knowing that an officer may not come, but then what?
Well, I'll tell you, that our response times are dependent upon the band of the department at the time.
Not necessarily the response time, but my question is, how does Redding get a larger number of officers?
Well, and that's kind of what I say, that's your voice that has to make that change. You know, there's a finite number of dollars in the city's budget, and I understand that budget. But it's up to you to decide, through your council, how that money's spent. And so it's really waiting for economic growth to take place in our community, and there's some issues that we have to fix before I think we can get a solid handle on how that's gonna happen. Yes, sir?
I was wondering, have there been meetings of the charitable organizations in Shasta County concerning their impact on their activity on the community itself? I live south of the North Oasis camps, and I have witnessed charitable organizations going on private property, which is trespassing, to give out tents, sleeping bags, bicycles, to drug-addicted offenders. And it's really bothersome for me as a citizen who's trying to combat the problem through involvement, and seeing charitable organization with an intent to help are actually really damaging the environment, because all of those things that have been given to them are left behind and end up me cleaning it up because it's flowed down the creek to my backyard. Has there ever been a meeting of charitable organizations about the impact of their behavior? And I'm very supportive of helping the homeless, I'm not, you know...
Well, they're actually, they're actually gold mining in the property of Bayou.
Yes, they are.
And changing streams, and...
I've lived there for 40 years, and there is no wildlife left, and that began about five years ago, the destruction, and it's a federally protected waterway. I have gotten no responses from water quality.
You know, the big problem that we have on that property, and code enforcement is very well aware of that property, and so am I, is that the owner is unresponsive. And the owner says that it's the city's problem, because he doesn't live in the city. So, he's actually going to start going to through some administrative hearings with the city, and they can lead in his property and other things, because, quite frankly, if you own property, it's your responsibility to clean it up. We don't like it. We don't like that they're there, but we have to do something.
Since you hired Mike Thomason, it's the first time anything's been done in the five years I tried to work with local agencies. And I would just like to encourage the audience here tonight to go to a city council meeting and demand that the city find the money to solve this problem immediately, or we're gonna lose all our waterways, and we're gonna lose our community.
Well, you know, Mike Thomas has been a great asset for us, and the council approved the money for us to be able to hire him part-time. And the reason that they're, you know, Gary and Mike are able to respond a little bit faster to some of these complaints and these things is because it becomes back to that proactiveness that we talked about. They don't answer calls for service. This is what they're doing for six months, full-time, is responding to your complaints about these transient camps. So, it goes back to that reactive and proactive, and having the resources to be able to do both, and right now, luckily, we got these two for six months. And Mike Thomas is a, you know, 28-year veteran, 28-year veteran of the Redding Police Department, retired as a sergeant, and, you know, we got lucky that he was, still had his post certificate, was still fit enough to come back and help us out, and, you know, Gary's just happy to be here, so we're lucky to have him. Yes, sir?
Couple months ago, when you were looking for more funds to sponsor more boots on the road, basically, one of the things that came out in the paper was that you had 12 officers on disability, and I'm not criticizing this, I mean, there's probably a good reason for it, but they never went into, you know, why there were so many, and what was being done to correct that problem. Because it sounds like 12 officers is a significant number of your law enforcement force.
Absolutely.
And just before the election, I think it affected the outcome of the election, is that there was 12 officers that were down on disability when you needed more officers. What would, why, I mean, I'm a business owner, if I had even, you know, a fairly small percentage, O should be down on me quickly. I just think that there's something to address there, that I think that there'd be more...
It is, it's methamphetamine-addicted offenders.
Plus the fact that I would be more apt to put money into your, you know, vote for more money.
I can answer your question.
Yeah, okay.
It's methamphetamine-addicted offenders. We fight with guys on a daily basis, which is not what an average job has to do. And methamphetamine-addicted offenders are violent, and you get an offender that is extremely strong, feels no pain, and doesn't get tired. So, in one of our cases, one of our officers alone fought with a 6'3", 243-pound person, hyped up on methamphetamine at toxic levels for seven and a half minutes by himself before his help got there. These officers get injured. And typically, it's our officers that are, quite frankly, I'm gonna be a little discriminatory here, but our older officers. You know, the average person retires from the NFL at 35, because they get injured more and they slow down. But those guys only play 16 weeks a year, and they only get hit hard on Sundays. Our guys are getting hit hard every day, and we don't have the officers to do the dogpile anymore. So our officers are fighting with addicted offenders longer by themselves, which, quite frankly, is creating greater injury to our officers, and because those fights sustain for a lot longer, is creating greater injuries to the suspects as well. But we've been very lucky so far that in those major fights, we've won those fights. Because I've said this before, and I'll say it again, my biggest fear as a chief is someday to have to give a speech, and not because I wanna connect with my community, because I'm giving a speech at a funeral because we lost one of those fights. Luckily, so far, we've won everyone.
Hi, Chief. I've heard you speak several times regarding the large homeless camp by Mercy Hospital. You've talked about going in and cleaning it up several times, and it's probably one of the larger homeless camps because of the proximity to the mission, it just happens to be. Has anybody explored acquiring the 29 parcels from the owners since that land is half undevelopable anyway? So it is city-owned, and therefore, if a homeless camp starts to develop there, you don't need permission from a private owner. We closed that canyon permanently by the city acquiring that land through eminent domain or through just purchasing it, because half of those pieces may be in trust accounts, and like you said, the owners aren't even aware that they own the property. Has anybody ever explored that instead of just using resources over and over again to just go in, chase them off, and then clean it up? And maybe solve the problem permanently by the city acquiring that land? We just sold Turtle Bay for $600,000, we should have some cash laying around to acquire maybe that $29,000, or 29 parcels to close this problem for you.
The honest answer is, sir, no, I didn't think of that. But that's a hell of an idea. So I will, I will make sure that I take that idea forward with the city manager, and they can assess whether or not, you know, I don't buy property as chief, police chief, but I'll bring the idea up, and thank you for bringing it forward. That's one of the things I love about these things, is, you know, if we wait for Rob to have all the good ideas, man, we're in trouble. So, anybody else have any questions?
You said earlier in the presentation about the police reports and under-reporting of, have you ever considered maybe partnering with 7R News or something and doing a PSA to where the word gets out about reporting? I mean, I talk to people on a weekly basis, lots of people on a weekly basis, that have issues that you don't ever know about, because they just feel nobody's gonna come, they don't feel like anything's gonna become of it, they don't know about your stats, but maybe doing a PSA?
No, absolutely. We've actually, we've done a lot of different things over the last year. We revamped the Redding Police website, so if you go there, you can actually find things now. We had to file a police report on our website, and quite frankly, as the chief of police, I got on it and I couldn't find it. So we had a volunteer, two volunteers, Rocky Slaughter and Matt Morgan, completely revamped our website, now you can actually find, the big button on the front says "Report a Crime." We also started the Redding Police Facebook page, we put our own press releases on that. If you like that page, all of our posts will end up going to your timeline, so you have a lot of opportunity to see what's going on in the police department. One of the challenges that I get when I deal with the media is, if you haven't noticed tonight, I'm long-winded. So I'll sit down, it's just a matter of format. I sit down with Evan from Channel 7, and Evan will tell you that he asks me one question, and 45 minutes later, he gets to hit the stop record button. The problem is, Evan only gets to put me on TV for 15 seconds. If I talk to Joe from the Record Search Lite, and once again, poor Joe gets his ear filled, and he gets about two quotes. So it's a matter of format, what I like about this, and I like about putting our own press releases on our Facebook page and letting people see those, is they get the whole story straight from us, and there's no real filter there, you get it straight from me. And that's why I like these. I actually have one right there, Rocky. It's in that chair. Yes, ma'am? Who was first? Ladies first? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
You had somebody come up and ask about what we could do. Could I, as a victim, could I address that to the gathering?
How about it, ma'am?
Don't be a victim. Take responsibility. Believe me, I've lived here for 60 years, and I've been victimized so many times. I have locks on every doors, I don't get in my car without locking it, I don't carry anything in my car that I can't afford to lose. I have, I don't carry a purse anymore, I came here today with my driver's license. I put lights on my barns, my field is completely lit up, you could land an airplane out there... You could land an airplane out there. Don't set yourself up because they're just looking for an opportunity. So, help the chief out and take responsibility.
And in Chris's case, in Chris's case, she can light it up so she can ride a horse out there. She's got beautiful horses. Yes, sir.
Well, as a business owner, I wanted, I wanted to ask you what we can do and how far I could go if somebody walked into my place with stealing something. How far can I go to stop them? I mean, if I, will I get sued if I go over there and forcibly stop them? Will I be arrested? How far can we go as a business owner?
Well, that's some of the, that's some of the problems that we're facing with a large like Safeway.
Right.
You know, quite, quite frankly, you know, people call them Safeway and Unsafe Way. And I hear it all the time. So, we had a good meeting with them the other day to talk about what they can do. They're changing their hours and doing a lot of other things. But if you look at Walmart, if you look at Safeway, if you look at most of our major box stores, they won't intervene because of the liability of the business if you hurt the person that's there. So, if you can get your property away from them, get it away from them, let them go out the door, call us, and hopefully, the demand of the apartment is low at the time. You're opening yourself up to the liability. And I'm not a civil attorney, so, you know, I'm not going to give you advice there, but, you know, I would love to be able to tell you that I'm going to be there in a couple of minutes. But like I said, when I made my own arrest on the street the other day, because I don't drive a patrol car anymore, you know, I waited fifteen minutes. So, what, what really it comes down to is what risk do you want to put yourself into, both physically and liability-wise? And I'm sorry that that's the answer. If I had more cops, I could get them there a lot faster, but we're just, our response time's just not there.
Well, in other words, we just let them go.
Well, like I said, it's your call. I'm, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a civil attorney that's going to tell you, you know, hey, you can accept this much liability and you can't. I think you're putting your, your personal safety at risk and you're putting your stuff at risk. Every person has a right to defend themselves and their property. So, you have, you're, you're held to the same standard that a police officer is. You have to be able to articulate the circumstances and the totality of the circumstance that required to use the force that you were going to... And that's the standard that police officers have to take when they, when we use force. So, if a police officer uses a baton or a police officer uses his gun or taser or anything else, we have to document the totality of the circumstance that required that use of force or we get sued. And believe me, we get sued a lot. So, you have to just know that there is a, a reasonableness, reasonableness standard that use of force is judged by both citizens and cops, and you're judged by that same standard.
But the criminal law, the justice of law, that's...
It's getting to that point.
We have no right to...
I didn't say that, ma'am. I just explained it to you. You have to be able to articulate based on a reasonable person's thought process at that time and be able to justify the use of force that you used, just like my police officers do.
They say something and they're not forced.
I'm not telling you to let them go. I'm telling you to get your property back. Okay? But don't beat the hell out of the guy because then you got a problem. Yes, ma'am?
So, on Sunday, I was a victim of car theft. And granted, it was recovered quickly Tuesday midnight around that time over at Quality Inn. I know that the recovery rate on vehicles is kind of high just because they steal and ditch. What is the statistic as far as catching a car thief? Like, how...
Clearance rate?
How far do you guys go to investigate it?
Yeah, we, we actually have that and it's right, if I go back to the property crime slide, it's right, where is it? It's right down here. It's in my notes on the bottom of the slide that don't show up there that I left the slide deck in my office because I'm a dummy. So, if you call me tomorrow, I can actually give that, or actually, I will provide those, those statistics to the Record Searchlight and to Channel Seven so they can put those up. Solve rates.
What do you guys do to investigate?
We have, for, for property crimes, for the city of Reading, we have two investigators for all of that. Now, when it comes to vehicle theft, that's where the California Highway Patrol comes in because they, they're with their North Division Office, they have an investigative team with the California Highway Patrol that investigates and coordinates with us on the, on the investigation of ten and fifty-ones of vehicle code or stolen vehicles. So, we do have investigation on that, but quite frankly, most of the investigation, they're looking at chop-chops, they're looking at serial guys. Most of them we catch because we see the car. So, the faster, if your car's stolen, the faster you can get that information into us and the faster we get it into the computer system, it gets aired over all of our mobile data computers, they air it on the radio. You know, you're stolen Plymouth Voyager van, white, silver, license plate number, and I'll tell you, cops love to hunt stolen cars. So, we actually, most of the time, quite frankly, you're right, they're ditched. And people call us and say, hey, this car's been here forever, or you find your car because you're smart enough to put it on Facebook. And unfortunately, you put something on Facebook and fifty thousand people are going to tell you where a white Plymouth Voyager is. There's a lot of them. But, you know, that, we find, we find, actually, a lot of citizens find their own cars, their friends see their cars because they know it's stolen and all that information is good, but let us come to get it because we can actually, you know, try to get some prints and stuff on it, figure out who did it. But once again, you know, it's a non-prisonable felony. Yes, sir?
Is there a long-term goal as far as keeping these prisoners in jail so you're not arresting them four or five times a day? Is there a long-term goal for that?
The sheriff, the undersheriff is here, but the sheriff, Sheriff Bosenko actually was able to secure a grant from the state to build a sixty-four-bed, expandable to a hundred and twenty-bed facility. Typically, the sheriff's department deals with the corrections side and God bless him for it because I don't like corrections and I would never want to do that job. But there is plans for that expansion, and then there's some other options that the sheriff is looking at that may be coming in a little bit shorter timeframe. Do you want to add anything to that, Eric? Or we got, got it covered? Okay. Yes, sir. Microphone. Everyone's got to hear you.
I'll be allowed.
I know, I've seen you before.
I heard someone say, if you're in a personal encounter, whether it's in your home or your business, one of the smartest things you can do to protect yourself on liability is dial nine-one-one and put yourself on speaker and report everything that goes on. Does that make sense to you?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of the, you know, the thought process behind the body cameras, you know, is that you protect yourself with that. But in the end, you know, when it comes to, I know what my guys have to deal with and I know what my guys have to go through. When it talks about your personal civil liability in those circumstances, I would really, you know, consult a civil attorney because I am not one. But I can tell you that the standard that my officers are judged by is the totality of circumstance at the time that put you in the position that needed you, required you to use that force, and it's a reasonableness standard. And that's what the courts, the Supreme Court has found. Yes, Ed?
Chief, I just want to say something. In regards to some of you who are asking questions about what you can do, Chris Wogga is a hundred percent right. Take responsibility. There's a couple of groups that are together. If you go to ReadingCrimeWatch.com, you can pick it up. There's a neighborhood portion and there's a merchant portion. If you go on that website, you can actually join those groups. There's also a direct access to the Reading Police Department. So, there's groups of us, the Reading Merchants Crime Watch Group has about six-hundred-and-sixty emails that they work with every day. And that's, what it's set up to do is if there's a problem at a business, they email one email address and it goes out to all six-hundred-and-fifty of those people. So, you can actually get on that website if you want to and, and get on that list and you can see what's happening in the community and you can report the crimes that you have. What it does is it helps everybody kind of work together to help solve the problem. And we have a direct link to the, to the police department. There's about twenty-five officers that are on that website, are on that email list, as well as the chief. And anytime you have an issue, it goes directly to those people, to those officers. And believe me, the response time, even though it may be a little lengthy, you do get their attention. So, that's helpful. Any of you want to join that group, just go to ReadingCrimeWatch.com and push the button and you can join that group.
One thing I will say, though, although it's effective, it does not replace nine-one-one. If it's an emergency, dial nine-one-one. If you want to inform the police department about suspicious activity or somebody that you see, you know, that kind of thing, that is very well, but if it's an emergency, please, it's no replacement for nine-one-one. Yes?
Good evening, chief.
How are you, chief?
Very good. Tonight, you told us a couple of different times, if you had this much money, you could do this, and if you had this much money, you could do this, and this much money, you could do this. You're the subject matter expert. That's why you're here as our police chief. As a business owner and a community supporter, my, my question to you would be, chief, put together an aggressive plan for this community. Let us know what that aggressive plan is and then let us go before city council and say, look, support the chief with this plan. But we don't know what, what you need. We don't know how many men, we don't know how many cars, we don't know what the pay is, but we can ask for the support from council if we know what you need. So, it's not X amount of money. It's, this is what we need. We need ten officers. This is what it's going to take. Okay, citizens, what are you going to do to get these ten officers?
Well, and that's, that's really the intent, but we also have to stage that in... We have to stage that in year by year. So, if I explained it wrong, I mean, if you, what we need to do is...
Even if it's a five-year plan.
It's a, it's a, probably more like a ten-year plan. So, if you want my honest assessment of what the Reading Police Department staffing level is, I would say it's probably about fifty percent of what it should be.
Because I've been a victim in this community a couple of different times.
Right.
And I'm willing to say, you know what? Let's take care of this business by taking care of business.
But if, what I'm saying is that even if tomorrow, and I, and I used this example the other day with Larry Lees, and he actually turned me down on my fictitious hundred million dollars, but if the council tomorrow said, hey, chief, here's a hundred million dollars, go up to, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty officers, I can't hire them that fast. So, that's why I want to go year by year on what I think is reasonable growth for us to be able to hire and move forward, getting us to, in the end goal, Rob's optimal of, of what might be upwards of a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty officers. So, that we go year by year in that growth.
And, and I think that we need to know something later so that we can support you and make that happen.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Two mics, one on each side. And I promised everyone it would be done by about eight-thirty, nine o'clock. So, if you have a question, please come forward now, I'll answer it for you and that way we can all get home in time for Bachelorette or whatever's on tonight.
Yeah. My name is John Hoflick and I live at nineteen-eighty-four Laurel Avenue. My house is right in the, practically the midst of the five-hundred homeless in that canyon, which is only, this phenomenon has taken place within about one year's time because I've lived in this neighborhood since nineteen-fifty-three. And it's been my investigation and experience from commuting from down south that the Amtrak train is bringing homeless people up here. And my question to, maybe not you, but your other, you know, colleagues, is who's paying for these homeless to come up here and who's directing them to come up here? Because when they were on the train, we were, we were, you know, getting out of the train, they asked, where is the hospital? Somebody's directing them to come here, somebody's directing them to go to this area, this major encampment in Reading around my house. And as the Reading Police Department knows, I've been a victim many times with nine-one-one calls and over thirty thousand dollars' worth of damage to my personal property. So, I just wanted to ask you that question, whoever can investigate this, your investigative team, who is directing these people to come to Reading and to pay for them to come here? Because an Amtrak ticket from LA costs quite a bit of money for a whole family to come here.
If you, if you get on Google and you run homeless resources and you get homeless resources Reading, it is a, about a three pages of scrolling. And they do Google searches. That's number one. Number two, when you talk to them, like the guys we talked to the other day, it was a couple, Florida bought them a bus ticket. Tom Bosenko ran into a guy the other day and he said, hey, I got sent here by Colorado because I was told I could get my surgery here and I can't get it there. Now, I just found out I, I can't get the surgery here either. What am I supposed to do? And Tom said, go back to Colorado. So, you know, I keep hearing about this white van that keeps pulling into downtown and unloading a bunch of homeless people and driving away. I got my suspicions of where it's coming from, but I don't know yet, so I can't say. But if anyone sees that van, give me the license number and I'll run it and I'll address who's dropping them off. The fact of the matter is, there are people coming here from other places. And whether it's Florida or whether it's Tahama County or whether it's Siskiyou County or whether it's Arcata, Teddy Snyder pulled over a car the other night with five guys in it. Oh, don't worry about us, we're just going to get some medical care. We're going back to Long Beach. We'll be here about a week. You know, there's something that's drawing them here and this word is spreading. And we, as a community, need to be able to change that so that we need to, we have enough low socioeconomic challenged people in our own community. We need to be able to be empathetic and deal with our local homeless and not attract them from other communities, and that's the message that I'm trying to give. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I'm really sorry to say, but city council, we need to disband them because they're not listening to us. We go there and we talk to them and they will not listen. The other night, we were talking to them about the ninety thousand dollars that they're spending to have someone from Red Lev come up here and do your job. And we told them that they needed to not do it. You know how to put safety on the streets, but city council won't listen to us.
Are you talking about the consultant?
Yes.
Okay, well, let me, let me be real clear what that consultant's going to do. That consultant is going to help us piece together a plan. That consultant is going to piece together a countywide plan and facilitate meetings with members of the community and other things. That consultant ain't going to tell me how to do my job. So, it's important, because these are labor-intensive things to put together, to, the consultants do a lot to facilitate community interaction, community input, and piece the whole thing together. He's not going to tell me how to run my department and that's not the intent.
Well, then Record Searchlight needs to get out of it because what they're saying is not what you just said.
Okay, well, you just got it straight from me and that's why I do this. Yes, sir?
First of all, this is my third meeting and I really appreciate that you're doing this.
Thank you, sir.
The homeless camps, one thing I've seen at Mercy and Clear Creek is clean it out, they come back, clean it out, they come back. Is there anything being done so that they don't keep coming back or, or that they just move like Clear Creek? It looks like they're going up the canal a little bit and hanging out there more.
Well, and, and I've described this at some of these town hall meetings like this. Sometimes the police department's a little bit like a boat. When you drive a boat through water, the water separates and when the police go by, the water fills back in. The fact of the matter is, is that yes, we are relocating them and we're moving them around. I can't force them to change their life. All we can do is give them the opportunity and if they don't want to, then we make them uncomfortable enough to where they go somewhere else. But I think there's some things that we can do that are different. We would love to be able to hit these transient camps a hell of a lot more often so they don't create the environmental damage that I showed you tonight. I just don't have the resources to make that happen. So, we're going to continue to hit these big cleanups as often as we can and as often as we can get these resources, but there's too much of it to go around. So, private property owners, I urge you, if you have property that has transients on it, we will come, we will cite them for the trespassing and we will make them leave. But if you clean up your own property, you have a lot more authority to do it a lot faster than I do. I have to store their property for ninety days. I had to buy a shed for the back of the police department to store homeless property because the critters crawling off their property were contaminating our criminal evidence. Scabies, lice, other things. So, if you have a lot more authority than we do in some cases, and I urge you to keep your property as clean as possible. If you own property and you don't live there, please go visit it. Please go visit it and help us keep it clean so that we can keep our community clean. So, I see no one else at the microphones? Yes, sir? You guys got to stand up or I'm going to call this thing quits.
Two quick ones.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're in the final stages of doing a Neighborhood Watch program.
Yes, sir.
Is there information on the Reading Police website that we can make sure that we cover all the bases for that and are there resources to maybe get an officer come to our final meeting so we can?
Absolutely, sir. And I have the volunteer that is working with Mike Leonard, Jason Schroeder, right there and he can give you all of that information. Jason is now, he started stand-up Reading and I, after a lot of begging and pleading and he is actually a volunteer of the police department now that works with CSO Mike Leonard and either him or Mike will come and, and do that for you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Next one is directed toward Jonathan. I work less than a block away from the mission and we have just this week hired a security guard full-time, 24/7, seven days a week, mostly for vandalize. But, but every day I go by the mission and there's at least six people that are just on the sidewalk by the tire shop and they're there six, eight, 10 hours a day. So, I'm thinking maybe you could take a stroll down the street and see what's going on there too. Great, thanks.
Thank you for having this meeting.